I'd like to call this open agenda meeting to order on February 21st, 2019. Mrs. Saradaki, will you please call the roll? Ms. Boroff?
Here.
Ms. Brody?
Here.
Dr. Clancy?
Here.
Mrs. Sariani?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Mrs. Winkler?
Here.
Dr. Kulikowski?
Here.
For Miss President. Thank you, Ms. Saradaki. Will you please join me in the salute to the flag? Ready, pledge again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. An executive session this evening. We discussed the personnel agenda, three letters to the board, Hib report, which there was nothing, suspension and detention report, and the legal, there was no legal status report either. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having a date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices located at Cedar Street and Evergreen Avenue in Scotch Plains, New Jersey, and such notice was provided in written notice forwarded to The Times, the Township Clerk of Scotch Plains, the Borough Clerk of Fanwood, and the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings as adopted March 29th, 2018. We have additions to the agenda since February 15th, which was LET 3, a note from Brunner PTA, and 5S Scotch Plains-Fanwood High School varsity letters for interscholastic activities criteria. This evening, there is no instructional update, but next week, we will have two things. And in accordance with the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Public Schools Bylaws 0164, 0165, the meeting will be open for 15 minutes for public comments with a maximum of two minutes for speaker. When you come up to the podium, if you will please state your name and the town in which you reside.
Hi, Edmond all Scotch Plains. I was here at a meeting August 30th, and at that meeting, I expressed concern how we don't have AEDs at the ball fields, the Board of Education ball fields. And I don't, I didn't have time today to check out the fields, but the last time I was around some of the fields, I still did not see any. You know, this is in regards to Janet's Law. And I did make one phone call to follow up probably a couple of months ago, and I never heard, nobody ever returned the call. So I'm just checking in on the status to see if there's any progress being made on this issue.
Let me talk to you. We do have an AED at the ball field that all the coaches have access to.
Which, which ball field?
It's actually in one of our storage facilities up at the field, and it is within the required distance that the state mandates.
Which, which ball field specifically is, just one or all of them, or?
Well, it's the football field, baseball field, and then also, our athletic trainer carries a portable AED with her.
And where's the trainer? You know, I don't know how familiar I am with Janet's Law, but based upon what I read, whether it's recess, practices, athletic offense, that were, you know, through the Board of Education, there's supposed to be an AED present at all the fields?
No, it doesn't, it has to be within a certain number, it should be within a certain amount of time to reach the AED.
It's a minute and a half walk to an AED.
Yes.
So, let's take Park Middle School, for example. If they're having a recess or something out there, or gym class, I guess, is there an AED within a minute and a half walk?
Yes, there are several.
While they're, while they're having gym class?
Yes.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So is there an AED at the ball field, an AED container with a sign saying AED?
No, we don't leave AEDs out. So that's your time.
Okay, well, I just have an article here at Garfield Soccer Field where a student was saved by an AED.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna follow up probably through you now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the article, too. Yes, that's helpful. Are you coming forward? Please come.
Hi, I'm Elaine Edmonds. I'm from Scotch Plains. I've never been to one of these meetings before, so I don't know how this works, but I was just curious if there's more information about this, the teachers' contracts, and I don't know how to find that information, or, you know, I just wanna know what, you know, what's going on, kind of, and I don't know what we can say, or?
Can't say.
Yes.
We can say, we can't say. We don't negotiate in public, and we are meeting with the teachers, and we have discussed things with the teacher's side and with our representative's side, and we just cannot discuss those specifics. And their wants and our wants are, we're trying to negotiate them. You know, we're not not talking.
Okay. So I guess you can't talk about if there's, if you feel like they're moving in the right direction or anything like that?
Yeah, I wouldn't, other than, you know, there's, there's ongoing negotiations, we really can't in public talk anymore detail about that.
It's not that we don't want to, it's, we're just, we don't, that's policy.
Okay, thank you.
But thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward? Seeing no one at this time, there will be another opportunity later. Okay, at this time, we'd like to move to committee reports. Does anybody have a committee report this evening?
Well, I have a couple. I have a short one. I have facilities. So, and it's pretty basic, the, just FYI, there was a bid put in the paper on February 19th for the windows at School One. If we receive an acceptable bid, we would hope to approve it in about March with a start date over the summer. An update on the turf fields that we are hoping to, through the Educational Services Commission, to secure a contract for the turf on both fields at the high school. And regarding our lockdown system, which has already been installed at the high school in Coles, and the installation was done internally to, it's a dozen cost, but they are going to be, we're proposing to do a battery-operated backup system that they would install in the remaining three schools, six, six schools, sorry. And we would, the cost for the, required for the wiring would be counteracted by the man-hours that we would be spending on that. Might I have missed anything, Deb? Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Boroff.
I can just, I can just add that on the, on the finance committee, we also talked about both the battery backup operation system through, through Eastern DataCom, and that that would go into all the schools but the high school in, in Coles, because they've already been finished. But the total price for the six schools will be $28,784, and we will be saving man-hours for the electrical installation and for the, for the cost of the wiring. And again, for the, for the turf, I would just add that we will be using the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Contract for turf to replace the turf on both fields at the high school. The cost will be $1,115,162, and it'll come from capital reserve. And the committee supported, as did the facilities, both of those recommendations. Other things that came to the finance committee, the annual audit is now, is now complete, so we will be asked this month for the board to approve the 1718 Annual Audit, and as well as the 1718 Audit Corrective Action Plan, and to certify that the, the corrective action plan has been, has been implemented. Mrs. Saradaki is very fast on these things, so, very quickly. Also, she, we are being asked to approve a settlement agreement for a student attending a school, a residential treatment center in Utah, and the, the cost of the academic portion of attendance is a maximum of $70,000 per, per year. And the current agreement will be in, in place for the current year, and it can go to, to, two years. And, let me see, did she add anything else? Oh, and, and also, she will be asking us to renew the, the district's contract with Ed Data Services for cooperative bid pricing. And this was nice to hear, because, because we do this, we, we save at least $100,000 a year, and it actually makes our, makes the, the process also easier. And also, she's, we're being asked to renew the contract with Effective School Solutions for the next year, 2019, 2020. And we were in, in support of all those recommendations. And I didn't write it down. Our next meeting, I believe, is Monday, March 12th.
11th.
11th, thank you. Whatever the Monday is. So that's, so that's finance. And then I was lucky enough, I should, I should actually pull up my notes, I was lucky enough to attend, Mrs. Williams and I are going to be covering the affordable housing, Scotch Plains Affordable Housing, what's it called? Let me.
Affordable Housing.
Yes, but it's called, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. So I was able to go to what is their, their second, there was their second meeting this last Wednesday. It was attended, there's about, now it's up to, there've been two more folks added, but there's, like, there were, there were 22 members at that point, which is Scotch Plains Mayor Al Smith, the Deputy Mayor John Lissardo, as well as a few Scotch Plains, you know, folks who work for the, for the town. And then there were also seven members from, seven volunteers from South Side and eight volunteers from the North Side, or vice versa. And we will have, we have a committee member there, as does, they're, they're still looking for some more, for some more business people, and actually, a woman who works for, just got added today, she works for a group in our area who works with, with homeless families, is also joining. So it's a very large group, it's a diverse group, and, and our job is to give recommendations to the, you know, town, town council, and to look in to a lot of things about the affordable housing. So what I was going to just go over, 'cause it's complicated, and I gotta do a lot of reading to just catch up. But if you go online, on, on the Scotch Plains website, you can, you can find this thing that says Affordable Housing Settlement. I handed out a few, and as you know, we have been, we have been mandated by, by the state to build affordable housing in, in our town for, for families or, or individuals of lower income. So the way it works in our state is that for every one unit that is built of affordable housing, the, the developers are allowed to build between four and, and five market-rate housing. So whatever a town gets assigned that they have to build, is then really times four or, or five what they have, what they have, what they have to build between affordable and market rate. So, so currently, we, we are somewhere around 450 of affordable housing, which would bring us to somewhere over 2,600 for market-based. The way this is working is a slow process of rolling out these, these, you know, projects. And obviously, part of this committee's work is going to be what's the impact on, on this for our schools, that's why we're there, but also for our, you know, community at large. And the, Thomas Stroh is the township coordinator, and he was very helpful, I actually called him, because there were numbers at the meeting, and then there are numbers here, and there's lots of numbers. But basically, we, we have had a settlement with, with the state that over the next seven years, we have to do certain steps. Among those, we, we, in his, his thoughts is the way it's moving is the, and that's what's on here. Parker Gardens, Amber, North Avenue, and, and Bo craft. We will be building probably about 90 of affordable housing there, and then market, market rate, which is actually 565 minus 90, so that's 475. Those are already in, in the pipeline and are, are happening. Part of our agreement with the state is that we have to continue to zone other areas in town for housing, and that's gonna be a slower process. But there are several sites, down in the, in the downtown revitalization zone, there are three different areas, there's Waldheim, and Berylium Road has an area, and Jerusalem Road has, has an area. With all of these, it's a process that the, I keep saying "we," I'm, I'm sorry, we're not Scotch Plains, I'm sorry if I'm saying that, like, we're the town council, but I'm a member, I'm a, you know, Scotch Plains resident. But Scotch Plains will look at each of these areas and choose how they are rezoned, and then whether they are actually built on is up to someone who wants to come and develop it. So we can't guarantee that if these areas are opened up, that anyone will, will actually build on them. And there's a meeting, I don't have my notes, but when did I say, in what I sent out, there's a meeting March, March 5th, I think? I'll, I'll look over my notes, I'll, March, March 5th, to talk about the, the Jerusalem Road project. Again, to have a public meeting, so everybody, you know, can actually see. What was clear from Mayor Al Smith and Deputy Mayor, and from the large cross-section of, of, you know, people that were there, is that as this town group, we are, it is okay to build the affordable housing, where the argument comes in is, there's the one to four, or one to five ratio. And that's where it gets harder for, for our, our town like ours that doesn't have a lot of open, open space. So part of what our, our, you know, committees will do, we're gonna, this committee is going to break into three subcommittees. One will be doing education for the public, just so that, 'cause I still, I'm, as I said, I'll be reading a lot to just try to catch up. And then one group will be doing impact, and I'm not sure what that means. I'm in the action group, the Board of Ed, Tanya and I are in the action group, which has to do with trying to look at and mitigate any negative impacts this amount of units opening up in our town, in one of our towns could do to our schools. So that's what we'll be looking at. And our, and each of the subcommittees will be meeting again between now and our meeting, and our next meeting in, in March. So that's a long way, but I was trying to be, you know, I, I think there's a lot of info that's not really accurate, so I'll try to be as accurate as I can, but if you did not understand, or if I didn't make any sense, go, go on the Scotch Plains website, 'cause that's gonna tell you what's going on accurately. So that was that meeting. So we will meet once a month, probably these, you know, subcommittees will also meet once a month. And it was a really positive meeting just by seeing all the cross, you know, section of, of, you know, townspeople that were there and really care about making this happen in the most positive way possible. It was a long way, sorry.
Thank you for the, for going to the extra meeting. You mentioned everybody that was on the committee. Were there many participants in the audience from the towns?
At this meeting, out of the 22, I would guess there were maybe nine or 10 of us on the committee that were there, and maybe four or five members of the public. But the meeting is really an hour long, so if you see the, the next time it is, it lasts an hour. That's it. So if you wanna come, and they also said anybody, the mayor and the Deputy Mayor, anybody who would like to join this committee, they are welcoming anyone. They want as many folks there, so that it really is, you know, we get as many, as many of us involved as we can, volunteers.
Well, thanks to you and Tanya for volunteering.
Thank you.
Any other reports?
I have a curriculum committee.
Sariani?
Okay. We had quite an agenda when we met on February 11th, so I'll just summarize. Mrs. Rabembis came to review a couple of important updated forms with the committee. The first form was a post-incident report in the event of a seclusion or restraint, where the district is mandated to inform parents in writing within 48 hours of the use of any seclusion and restraint, which is very unusual, but required, and what follow-up is planned. So we reviewed that updated form. We also reviewed self-harming behaviors or suicidal ideation kind of risk assessment form, where if a student is made, made known to have made any statements of self-harm or suicidal ideation, there's a form that captures the details of what the student said, and also, it provides copious number of resources, it's a several-page form, to parents of where, where the parents can take the child for psychiatric resources in the community, recommended follow-up, and then a clearance indicating that the child is ready to be back safely in school. So we reviewed those two updated forms. Then Gita Faria came with, with the, and Gita is the, the science supervisor, and she came with Catherine Hollenbeck, who is a science and ITE teacher. And they talked about updates to the ITE course proficiencies that were completed to align courses with career-ready practices, specifically for engineering technology, CAD 1, 2, and 4, and CAD stands for computer-aided drafting courses and product design. So Mrs. Hollenbeck talked about engineering technology, focusing on the engineering design process, that the students were documenting, learning to document each step and completing multiple engineering design challenges. The course highlights challenge, teamwork, and the design process. This year, and how the students do that year to year could change. This year, the students are working on completing a project for the Panasonic Creative Design Challenge, and it's very exciting, because they qualified for the finals of the competition, which the committee was very impressed with. And they're also working on, the project for that competition involves using a robot to simulate heart surgery, which was interesting. Then for computer-aided drafting, Mrs. Hollenbeck talked about starting with kind of what each course, went through each course, that CAD 1 starts with a 2D design project and ends with a 3D project, which is designing a room. In CAD 2, the 3D modeling is of more complex objects, requiring additional views, and students reverse engineer and design a toy train. And in CAD 4, students reverse engineer a classroom floor plan using actual industry, industry drafting software, and ultimately, complete an architectural renovation project, which this year is a Sears, a Sears kit home. Then finally, the last course proficiencies that were updated and discussed were product design, in which students have to incorporate empathy into their design thinking and consider what is, what is the consumer need, and their task was designing a project this year that helps someone. In this course, they were gonna bring in people from the community, true project design, product designers, to judge the student projects. And students will also have the opportunity to learn the practical applications of engineering in many areas, not just technologies such as fashion and other, other areas that involve product design. Okay. Then switching gears, Dr. Hazy came in to discuss co-curricula varsity letters. There's a new state mandate that tasks districts with awarding varsity letters to school-sponsored interscholastic clubs that compete, in addition to athletics. Dr. Hazy, Dr. Hayes, and other involved parties are thoughtfully determining how to apply the mandate to clubs at the high school, and what criteria to use to award the varsity letters. So at this point, criteria including active membership, such as participating in practices, rehearsals, and competition for a certain timeframe is being developed to award letters to the following clubs. Music across the board, so the Moonglowers, Select Choir, Chamber Choir, Sensations, Los Cantadoras Choir, Men's Choir, SPF Jazz Marching Band, Winter Guard, the Dance, Dance and Blue Diamond Step Teams, and then DECA and FBLA, because they both engage in, in competitions. So the board is gonna be asked to vote, I think, next week on those things, per the state mandate. Okay, and then finally, Doctors Dumresk and Dr. Holloway came in to talk about additional clubs at the middle school level, which was also very exciting. Each middle school has already formed one new club this year, and is proposing an additional new club. And they incorporated student voice, they, they put out a survey to students to see what kind of clubs the students would be interested in. Right now, Park Middle School is running a new STEAM club, in which 5th to 8th grade students explore science, technology, engineering, art, and music through activities such as architecture, puppetry, robotics, coding, and instrumental integration. And Terrell's new club is a debate and model UN club for 6th, 7th, I'm sorry, 7th and 8th grade students, where the students create, deliver, and debate proposals based on current global issues. So the second club that each middle school is proposing is at Terrell. They want to start a morning news club, in which 5th to 8th grade students will delve into news reporting, writing, and production, and I think, like, do a news stream, a news stream that all of the students would be able to watch in their classrooms. And then at Park, they want to start an art club involving sketching, painting, sculpture, and other media to create projects for themselves and display throughout the school. That's it? Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Sariani. Any other reports? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll move on to the letters to the board. One LET is an email dated February 13th, 2019, from a Scotch Plains-Fanwood High School parent, Tina Farrara, regarding the electrical program at the VOTEC, which was referred to executive session. Dr. Hayes has responded. Two LET was an email dated February 13th, 2019, from a Coles parent, Hope Alfieri, regarding the use of snow days on 2018, 2019 school calendar. Dr. Hayes has also responded. Three LET was a thank-you note from the Brunner PTA about repairing and installing new playground equipment. Superintendent's report, Dr. Hayes?
Thank you. Tonight, I would ask that the board approve the two out-of-district placements as they are listed on the agenda.
Have a motion? Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries?
Thank you. At our next meeting, I would like the board to affirm the superintendent's At our next meeting, I would like the board to affirm the superintendent's decisions in the seven January HIB cases that were reported in the executive sessions on January 24th and January 31st. Two cases were determined to be harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and five cases were determined not to be. Three S, tonight, I would ask that the board approve the three field trips that are listed on the agenda. The first is for the students from our Saga Club to travel to New York City on March 23rd to attend the musical, The Prom. The second is for 7th and 8th grade band from Terrell to attend Tom's River High School North on May 31st. They will be performing and having their performance adjudicated by nationally-ranked judges, so that they receive feedback on their performance. And then finally, our AP Environmental Science students would like to travel in May to Sealy's Pond and the Wachong Reservation. This is very exciting. This pond is designated for fish stocking by the New Jersey Fish and Wildlife Service, and the students will be releasing the trout that they have been raising this year.
Wow. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you. At our next meeting, I will be asking that the board approve the updated industrial technology education proficiencies that were reported out tonight through the board curriculum committee report that you just heard. And five S, which is the addition to the agenda for tonight, and I've provided for the board a summary of the qualifications, would be to have the board approve the criteria for earning varsity letters in the activities that Mrs. Sariani just outlined in her report. And then tonight, I would ask that the board approve the personnel agenda as reviewed in exec this evening.
So moved. Any discussion?
Mrs. Saradaki, will you please call the roll?
Yes, could you please indicate who seconded that?
Amy.
Okay. Mrs. Winkler?
Yes.
Mrs. Brody?
Yes.
Mrs. Boroff?
Yes.
Dr. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sariani?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Kulikowski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Hayes. Mrs. Saradaki, ready for business functions?
Yes. I'd like to review the items I'd like voted on first.
Okay.
That's okay?
Sure.
One B U S, I'd like to move that, have someone move that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's recommendations for staff training reimbursements on the report dated February 21st. Five B U S, I'd like the Board to approve the settlement agreement for a student to attend Monument's Residential Treatment Center in Utah at a cost of $70,000 prorated for the 2018-19 school year. Then 11 B U S, if the Board could approve the amendment to the 2018-19 ESEA to include carryover funds. So you'll see the initial amount of the grant that we received for 2018-19, the carryover amount. That's the amount that was not spent last year. And so, the total amount we'll have to spend this year is indicated for Title I, Title II, and Title IV.
That also includes the non-public schools.
It does include the non-public schools, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. 12 B U S, I'd like the Board to accept the audit as present, was presented in November by Nisavatia and Company in the 2017-18 Auditor's Management Report. 13 B U S, you should have all received a copy of the Audit Corrective Action Plan, move that the Board of Education approve the 2017-18 Corrective Action Plan resulting from the audit. And 14 B U S, certify the implementation of the Corrective Action Plan for the audit. The only item that we had to correct in our audit is that they did find some travel expenses where non-traditional methods had been used, such as, I can't even think of the websites.
Expedia.
Expedia, where they don't clearly identify the travel expenses unless you go in and do it a certain way. Those sites did save us a great deal of money. And what we did for corrective action plans, we've made it clear to people that when they submit in the future, it has to be broken down, so that there's identifiable costs if they do both plane reservation and hotel, or a combination of costs on that. So every time now someone submits a purchase order for travel, they'll be receiving back explanation of what's acceptable for receipts. So.
Okay. So can I have a motion for those items?
So moved.
Second.
Who seconded? Tanya? Any discussion on any of those items that Mrs. Saradaki just read?
No. I'm just, I would like to thank Mrs. Saradaki for moving so quickly.
Okay, anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Saradaki. I can review the other items now.
Two B U S, I'll be asking the Board to acknowledge receipt of disbursement listings for the month of January 2019. Three B U S, I'll ask the Board to acknowledge receipt of the district schools' fire and security drill reports for the month of January 2019. Four B U S, we do not at this time have additional related services, but if we do, I'll be asking the Board to approve them at that time. Six B U S, I'll be asking the Board to approve Zachary Seif in the amount of $610 as a musician for the Rep Theater production. That is paid out of Rep Theater proceeds. Proceeds, yes. Seven B U S, I'll be asking the Board to approve renewal of participation in the Ed Data Services contract for cooperative bid pricing for 2019-20 school year. And the reason we do that at this time is because the purchasing for 2019-20 generally begins as soon as the budget is approved, in the spring, so that the supplies are in for the start of the school year. Eight B U S, I'll be asking for a contract renewal with Effective School Solutions. That is also a 2% increase, and that is the program that we have at the high school with the counselors. Nine B U S, I'll be asking for the Board to approve the cost of electrical upgrade for the school's security systems, and that the upgrade is for the battery backup. But what we've been doing with the system is we've been installing the electrical for all the signage that goes into the building with our in-house electricians with, and we've been purchasing all the components required to install that wiring. With this, they will be installing it, and it will be to a battery backup system. Ten B U S, I'll be asking for the Board to approve Shaw Sports Turf, to supply the turf for the high school's synthetic fields at a cost of $1,115,162. A copy of their proposal was dispersed to everyone. One of the upgrades I want to identify in there is for the rubber pellets that go into the turf will be green instead of black, which is supposed to cut the temperature between 10 and 15 degrees for the students playing on the field. So, because turf naturally makes it hotter than playing on a grass field, so by substituting that will reduce the temperature, the increase in the temperature, so. Funds will be withdrawn from capital reserve for this purchase. And then fifteen B U S, I'll be asking for the Board to acknowledge receipt of the Board Secretary's report, the Treasurer of School Funds report, and budget adjustments for the month of January 2019. And sixteen B U S, I'll be asking the Board to approve the bills for the period January 26th, should say 2019, to February 22nd, 2019.
Thank you, Mrs. Saradaki. Okay, moving on to board policies. Do we have anything from policies?
Not at this time. Meeting soon.
New board business? No new board business. Other board business? Any requests to attend workshops? Any workshop reports?
Like to attend the Union County School Board's, what is it, the, like Unsung Heroes?
Uh huh.
Does that count as a, attend a workshop?
Oh, you need to put together a whole list of.
Right. Yeah, Doug needs to sign us up all at once, something like that.
So, anyone that wants to go to the Unsung Heroes, New Jersey School Board's presentation, contact Pat Kane.
Okay.
And we'll approve everybody, and because we have to do that registration as one group, along with the student who's the unsung hero, and any family members that are going to be attending that night. It's a wonderful program.
When night was that again? I know we got an email about it, but it was, to remember, I was starting to look it up. It's, it's, I want to say a Wednesday.
It was March 13th. 6:00 or 6:30. It's March 13th, it's a Wednesday.
Yes, March 13th. It begins at 5:30, and then, well, I think the program itself begins at 6:00.
Six, yeah.
But they open at 5:30.
Check in, it's 5:30.
Registration.
So there are no other reports? Thank you, Mrs. Winkler. Two OBB, youth art, month is March, and we're going to have someone make the motion to move that the board adopts the resolution. And then we'll also, next week, have the approval of the minutes from January 10th. Should that be January 10th, or was that January 3rd? Reorg meeting? Reorg meeting? Hmm. It says 10th, but wasn't that on the 3rd? Yeah. Okay. So that will be January 3rd's reorg meeting, and January 24th, open session, as well as executive session, and January 31st, open and executive session minutes. So now, in accordance with Policy 9322R, the meeting will be open for 15 minutes for public comments, with a maximum of two minutes per speaker. Speakers addressing items on the agenda will be heard first, and then if time remains, speakers may address other matters. When you approach the podium, if you would please state your name, and please list the town in which you resign. Seeing no one? Nope, sending someone, okay.
Hi, it's Elaine Edmonds. Can I approach twice?
Okay, sure.
Elaine Edmonds, I'm from Scotch Plains.
Say your name again.
Elaine Edmonds.
Thank you.
Yep. I just wanted to find out more about what happened at Terrell Middle School. I know that I had heard from neighbors, they were worried about sending their kids to school. So can you tell us more about that, and just what the process is?
Right. So we can't speak about individual students publicly, but what I can tell you is that we did uncover a concern that some students had shared with us about another student. It was thoroughly investigated, and we found that there was no reason for anyone to be alarmed about the student. And we followed all the proper protocols. We have a regular protocol that we follow when these things come up, and we also work very closely with the Scotch Plains Police when it's necessary. So this was a two-stage process. We worked very collaboratively with the child's family, and that's really all we can say, is that at this point in time, we do not believe that there's any threat, and there's no danger in having the children go to Terrell Middle School. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else would like to come up for public speaking? Okay, seeing no one, then we'll move on, for the good of the order.
Now that I've found my notes from the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, I just want to go over again those, those dates, if any of the public would like to. The Jerusalem Road redevelopment plan in Orange will be, will be presented at the Scotch Plains Town Council meeting on 3/5/19, and that meeting is open to the public. And our next meeting of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee will be Wednesday, March 13th, at 6:00 PM. And as I said, that meeting runs an hour, and then the next hour is actually the downtown redevelopment committee. So if you want to come and hang around and hear, hear what's new in Scotch Plains then, that's an option as well. I just wanted to get those dates out clearly.
Thank you, Dr. Clancy. Or anybody else?
I had the pleasure of stopping by the basketball game this evening. I understand they won, but I want to congratulate the seniors. It was senior night, so the varsity cheerleaders and the basketball players were all honored tonight, so it was, it was nice. And then I scooted out and came over here, but my son texted me and said they won.
Very good, thank you. Great news to share. Mrs. Winkler?
I went last week to the, the Cabaret Night that Mrs. Allen hosted, and that's always, I think, my favorite concert to go to. The kids let loose a little, it's a little, little easier. Easier, I guess, is not the word I mean to use. Just, just a little more laid back, is really, I guess, what I'm trying to say. But it's, it's a fun show, and, and a lot of the kids come out and sing songs solo, and, you know, show their stuff. And I'm always impressed at some of these kids who are otherwise fairly quiet and fairly shy, and then they suddenly come out belting tunes, and it was, it was well done. And the kids did a nice job, Mrs. Allen did a nice job wrangling them all together.
Thank you. So we have some other good news to share. Our varsity girls swim team this year are the Union County champions, and the state sectional semifinalists. And our boys varsity swim team will be competing this Saturday at TCNJ for the state's championship against Mainland Regional. So we want to wish them well. It's always exciting. I'm always surprised at how exciting swim meets are. It's just, it's such a team sport at the end of the day. It's, it's wonderful to see. They are presently the state sectional semifinalists, so we're very proud of them. And Winter Track has done extremely well this year. They are the state champions, and we were, will be looking forward to honoring these groups likely on March 14th. All right. Looking forward to that, Dr. Hayes. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, then can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I didn't think so. Motion carries. I declare this meeting adjourned. Next meeting will be next Thursday at 7:30.